Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board Meeting for Tuesday, June 11, 2019. The meeting is being recorded and will be available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the Douglas website. We'll come to order at 7:06. First item on the agenda, public hearing, Scott and Deborah Ballas, application for accessory apartment special permit, 13 U Street. In accordance with the Town of Douglas accessory apartment zoning by law in Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, the Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application of Scott and Deborah Ballas for an accessory apartment special permit. Property location is 13 U Street, assesses map 198, posse 24, in Douglas, Mass. Public hearing is being held on Tuesday, June 11, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the community meeting room, Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Copy of the application may be viewed in the community development department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Thomas Knox, junior chairman of the planning board. Public hearing is now held.
I'm not sure if anybody's here.
Anybody here for that?
All right, I'll give you the rundown. This was an accessory apartment that was previously approved by the board by the same individuals that this application pertains to. There's no changes. Their special permit expired, even though we notify them regularly in advance of it expiring that they have to renew. Certainly, the renewal process is a much simpler process than reapplying. So, basically, nothing's changed. This is exactly the same as it was.
Any other questions on it? Motion to close the public hearing? Anybody in the audience have any?
Make a motion, close the hearing.
Motion made by Aaron, seconded by Mike.
It's a special permit, so it's a supermajority. All five of you have to vote unanimously.
Can you further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
It expired.
It expired.
Yes.
Sure, you want a motion to accept?
Yep.
I'm going to motion to accept the application for accessory apartment special permit for Scott and Deborah Ballas at 13 U Street.
Motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Jake. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. One abstention from Tracy.
Since we're early, I would suggest we jump to number three. Hopefully, we can get that done quickly.
Number three under discussion? No, on number three on the agenda?
On the agenda, under discussion.
Under discussion.
Medicinal alternatives.
Alternatives, 120 Gilboa Street. All right. Anybody here for that, Bill?
Yep.
There's some, Tim Sage made a plus on the hill, the engineers for medicinal alternatives. In our site plan review approval, dating back now to June of 2013, 2017, one of the conditions of that approval was actually condition 26, was to come up with an engineered plan for control of egress and access off of Gilboa onto the site parking lot. So, the plan in front of you, the parking lot, which is to the west of the site, we have developed a striping plan to limit where movements are made. And one of the suggestions, and I don't know, Billy, you and I talked about this yesterday, was it's not on the plan, but to put entrance arrows and exit arrows at both of the, what's defined now as the driveways into that parking lot.
So, it's just line striping. You know, I was hoping they were going to do both sides of the road, as, you know, they control the parking on the other side also. But according to Tim, they don't have any demand for parking on that side, so he's not proposing.
But it's open now.
It's open now.
People can fish again, or whatever they're going to do.
Well, it's my understanding that the town owns the property. They have an exclusive easement to park on the property. That doesn't mean it prohibits the town from using the land as they normally would.
Now, there are no parking signs and such that are in that parking lot.
On the poles.
Yeah. So, what does that?
I would say, let's ask town council if that's a question, Ernie.
Yeah, I mean, if people want to pull in and park, and they see a no parking sign, then they're kind of...
Yeah. I don't know if Tim has any opinion on any of that?
Well, I represent medicinal, which is a tenant. The property's owned by Gilboa Properties.
Can we acquire on that?
Yeah, I mean, people have asked me, can I park there? Or can I park there? Can I fish there? Can I fish there? And when the rope was up, there was no resolve of that. So, now the rope's down, people have been pulling in and parking, but they don't know whether they can park and go fish, or if they can, if they're going to come back and find their covey and toad or...
Right.
I mean, I can understand no overnight parking or something like that. I can totally understand that.
An exclusive parking easement says nothing about signage.
Right. There are signs up, so that's, I'm wondering what the sign should say.
Probably no overnight parking.
So, what's the question for town council?
Well, since the town owns it, can people park there without...
Can residents...
...full and open enjoyment of the property?
Enjoy it.
Because if they're not going to actually be striping it or using it for their parking count...
Correct. If we're not conflicting, if we're not preventing their use of the property as the easement allows...
Should the time come when they need that parking lot?
Then it can be revisited.
Just to get the question resolved, it was whether or not people were going to get their cars over to the new parking lot.
Well, and removal of the signs, and who's going to do that?
Do they have a date, opening date?
But that doesn't pertain to this particular...
I think they're planning...
Well, I thought maybe they were going to...
No, they...
Line the other side.
They have no plans for that side of the road. That's why the new parking lot is going to be striped on the other side of the road and arrows showing in and out, but the parking lot across the street...
The permit was open ended, right? On the striping?
The permit was subject to your approval of the striping plan.
Okay. Exactly. Pretty much exactly what I said.
But they've only presented a plan for the other side of the street, not the big park.
So, it's open ended.
Yeah, it's open ended.
So, now we're closing it. They're not striping it. They're not using it for their exclusive easement.
It's clean. They'll stripe this, they've got it all numbered, and so be it.
Just to note, on the opposite side of the street, one of the things in the, we'd asked for a waiver for the parking on that side because we didn't need it. The reason we're not going to stripe it is, if it's not going to be used, there's no sense in putting a stripe down. You're just going to maintain.
Right, back to the people using it.
So, here's the issue. As I mentioned, they have an exclusive right to park, but that includes maintenance of the parking area, which to me says line striping and whatnot. So, if there were access and egress points on there, I mean, I'm not suggesting that we do this as part of this submittal, but I'm just saying, the maintenance of that falls on Gilboa Properties, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
So, they're not going to be using it, but you're saying that they should be maintaining it with...
That's the way, that's the way the easement deed reads.
So, I think we should probably ask town council about that, if they're going to be responsible for maintenance, for striping of the parking spots for...
Is there an opportunity for them?
No removal, I mean, what does it say?
Maintenance of the parking area.
Can they relinquish the easement?
I'll provide a copy of the language to everybody.
The thing was that they sold it to the town, right? Or something, or the town took it for taxes.
We took it for back taxes from a person that owed taxes. And Gilboa, their predecessor before Classic Involv occupating, I forget the name of the company, Gilboa Properties, no...
Guilford.
Guilford had two different companies that owned the different pieces, and they reserved themselves an exclusive easement, even though it was a different company name, you know.
If the reality is, if the entire site were built out, it's 300,000 square feet, if they had, they have space for additional tenants, particularly on the second floor. Classic pretty much maintains the entire first floor. If they filled up the second floor with other tenants, they would need that because it would trigger the need for additional parking.
I'm just looking for clarification from our town council.
That's it. But otherwise, you know...
So, I need a motion and a vote on that.
Make a motion to approve the parking schedule, subject to...
Addition of access and egress arrows.
Access and egress arrows.
For...
120 medicinal alternatives, 120 Gilboa Street.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were you going to, Tim, were you going to raise the other question?
It's what?
A second. Okay, we've got a second.
The windows aren't even... 7:15.
That's it? The charred one?
Yeah, there you go. Takes a little finesse. You gotta fiddle with it.
It's like a hurricane.
Good.
Keep the people undesirables outside.
I'll walk it up.
Unless they're the skinny.
Right.
Your head, you're like your body cam, right?
All right. Move on to our second item on the agenda, 7:15. Public hearing, John and Michelle Alexion, application for an accessory apartment special permit, 124 Martin Road. In accordance with the Town of Douglas accessory apartment zoning by law in Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application of John and Michelle Alexion for an accessory apartment special permit. Public location is 124 Martin Road, assesses map 195, posse 15, in Douglas, Mass. Public hearing is being held on Tuesday, June 11, 2019, at 7:15 PM in the community meeting room, Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Copy of the application may be viewed in the community development department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Dennis Knox, junior chairman of the planning board. Public hearing is now held. Do you have anybody presenting anything for this?
I think Mr. Alexion. No? No? Okay.
Same thing, Bill.
This is Cliff Van Reed's old house. And it's my understanding that since he sold, there was no longer a special permit for those individuals. So, this application comes in, basically, to continue the use of the accessory apartment. It's my understanding that the related maternal mother will be occupying the accessory apartment. So, it's already an accessory apartment. We have new occupants, is really what it boils down to.
Was this the house that came to us that was no longer useful, that they were going to try to do?
They wanted to do an assisted living.
Remember that?
Which I'm kind of doing with my mother.
They were telling you, commercial.
No longer useful. My gosh. No, this is fine, this is fine.
So, we've got area is 1200 square feet. We've also got checked off that it's detached, structure provided more than 50 feet. They said yes.
What is this? This is the house.
No, it's all a joint.
There's multiple errors on the application.
And are we allowed 900 square feet?
Yeah. So, there needs to be waiver. They said that they're not asking for any waivers, but they are.
But it's existing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's still the waivers apply and...
Right, right. So, we'd have to consider the waivers, even though they said they weren't.
Mr. X?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you are requesting waivers for the area?
I don't know that.
Yes.
You are.
I don't, I can't. It's, one of us told us is the procedure costs less because it's current.
It's true, however, the size of the existing building exceeds the allowable size under the bylaw, so you need a waiver granting.
The space, the space, not the...
Is that what was done previously?
The area, square footage.
Yeah, that's what was done previously.
Yes.
So, did he say yes, he wasn't requesting a waiver?
I can't read it.
Oh, in terms of the size, in terms of 900?
And it's not detached. It's attached.
Right.
It's a place on the corner. This is a place on the corner?
Yeah, the turn.
Is this the same place that you set out here? They wanted to do an assisted living thing?
Yes, right.
It's got like three wings, I think.
It's got a, well, it's got a main, it's got a main area, and it has the in-law area.
Yeah. We have to note, we have to note the waiver.
That's a large structure.
Yes.
But they, do you want one?
It's a regular house with an accessory apartment.
It's just accessory apartment, but it's, they're needing a waiver because of the square footage.
I understand, it's a huge, kind of a big building, so I thought if they would have a lot more than one accessory apartment.
We only get one.
Yeah, you only get one.
You can only get one.
Is that size restricted to living, or just in general, including like a garage? Because I mean, it's the 900, the size of 1200.
The land space. The 900 is what is dedicated to the in-law, to the accessory apartment.
Including like the garage and not the area?
No, no, that's...
Unless you're going to put your mother in the garage.
Right. So, it doesn't count that, but apparently the square footage is 1200, but you just need a waiver for it. So, it's already existed.
It's all right.
We could possibly not grant it. It needs to be asked for.
It needs to be voted and granted.
So, just so you understand, the applicant, that it's limited to 900 square feet under the accessory bylaw, and apparently it's 1200, so what Bill was trying to suggest is that you need to ask for, if I'm saying this right, you need to ask for the waiver to go over the 900 square feet, but it's preexisting. And we can grant that, but also there was something that was said detached, but it's not detached, it's attached.
That's a clerical.
Yeah, there was a clerical. So, we're trying to kind of help you through this. But you understand the 900, 1200 square feet thing?
Yes, if that's, it must have been, that's what they've done previously, too. They must have applied for it.
Right. Now, it's only granted on the original structure when it was built. The waiver was probably granted then, but you still have to ask for it at this time because it is over 900 square feet.
Would you like to ask for it?
Sure.
I'd like to ask for it.
A good thing.
What was the question on the, is it checked off wrong as far as it being attached or detached? Is it worth your asking?
So, it needs to, this sphere of fact, and in the records, it's attached.
We can do that.
I'm all set.
Make a move.
Need to close the public hearing? Yes, we do. Anybody in the audience have any questions on this application? Name and address, please.
Mike Chezey, 150 Martin Road. The property was sold perhaps maybe two years ago?
Yeah.
What's, what's happened to that apartment for those two years? And the other question is, I want to understand, it reverts automatically back to a single family?
Go ahead, Bill.
And then at some point, they have to come follow with another.
They have.
Well, with another, or is this, is this taken as a separate?
This is a brand-new application.
Separate application.
It is a new application.
So, they need a new waiver, they need everything new, basically.
Yeah, it's just, they're the new owners, they want to use, be able to use the accessory apartment for one of the, one of the people's mothers. And they're applying for the application for an accessory apartment now.
Right, so it's your mother, maternal.
It's my mother.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was the whole purpose of me asking to buy the house.
Nice, good.
Is the property, ask if there's a business at all going on in there?
Sure.
They have not applied for any business. It's just a single-family home with an accessory apartment with a mother. That's the way the application is.
What he asked is, if you're looking up online, it looks like there's some kind of a business.
Okay. Tom, the confusion there may be that the previous owner had come in with an application to put an assisted living facility there, and we did not...
Different business, Ernie.
What are you tagging as the business? What do you see publicly?
Well, that was the other question, is a office a business?
Home office. They could do mailing, they could do computer work, somebody could have a business.
That's why I'm not sure.
We're out of our league.
They don't have to come to us.
Going out of the realm, that would be zoning.
That's why I was asking.
They don't have to come to us.
Yeah, if you have questions about activities that are occurring that require a permit under zoning, then you should talk to the zoning enforcement officer.
Yeah, that would be a zoning issue. That isn't a planning issue. But I've heard nothing about a business going in there. It's just a single, it's just a regular, it's just a regular accessory apartment.
Already listed.
That I don't know, that would be zoning.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any other questions?
For home office or home business?
But see, people are...
Don't they come here?
People are tagging all over the internet.
They do. They get business certificates at the town clerk.
Right. But even on the internet, people tag a business on Google search, and it just, they might be a clerical person, or they do computer work, and then all of a sudden, there's a little arrow, and it says Joe's Home Repair, or whatever, and it doesn't mean it's like a business certificate business.
No, it might not trip the bylaw. There's a lot to it, and it's not for us to look at that.
Right, exactly.
But a person does come here if they want to run a business out of their house?
Yes, to the town clerk.
Okay.
Well, depends.
I just want to clarify because we're saying that they don't, but they do.
Well, depends if the business trips the bylaw.
If it trips the bylaw, yes, yeah.
If we're the special permit granting authority for a particular thing, but more often than not, those fall under ZBA.
Okay. I'm going to check them out.
Okay. Motion.
To close the public hearing?
Yep. Motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, motion to grant the special permit for the accessory apartment.
Make a motion to accept the special permit for 124 Martin Road for John and Michelle Alexon with the waiver for square footage and the note that it is an attached apartment.
Second. Motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. You're all set.
Maria will be in touch with you.
So, Phil?
Yo.
Behind the property, it's a spit pond. It just gets wet when it rains, right? So, the neighbor who owns the land or part of that land named it after his son. So, it's called David's Pond, right?
Okay.
But it's, there's an arrow on there from Google, everything on this property that's not accessible, and so people see, wow, David's Pond is on there, but there isn't really. So, this is what's happened, that people can just put days on stuff.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah. Phil, we got a couple minutes, anything we can bang out?
Yeah, but I'm just, it's amazing what can be perceived.
Solar decommissioning, number four, under discussion. In your packet, I have two proposals. This is for both solar facilities, okay? So, one for each. One of the proposals has to do with both sites. So, it's kind of like one proposal for either or both sites, and the other one has two separate proposals.
I'm not finding mine.
Okay, they look like this. Two emails. And then it's attached. One from Perry, Pear Corporation.
These three?
Yes. And then the other one's from Stantec. I did solicit three. I also solicited CDM, but they never replied.
Oh, really?
Okay.
Where's the price? Pear, we saw it from the wooden farm, right?
Yes, that's how I got their name.
Wow.
So, I did solicit input from both of the sites, to contact people from both of the sites. I didn't hear from Wall of Lake. I heard from Julie at West Street, and she said she's deferring to the board, she has no preference.
Okay. Do you have any?
I don't.
Alice?
I think either will do a fine job.
Have you ever done any work with either one of these before? These are two new ones, right?
I've worked with both.
You have, all week, but has the board?
The board, I know Stantec's working on the cistern for North Village, and Pear Corporation did a, actually, they did a dam inspection for, I think, Morris Pond, maybe?
Okay.
And that's, we kind of dealt with them a little, and they, both have confidence in me.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Anybody have any questions?
Does this take into account, like, inflation and...
It will.
So, how are we going to fashion the bonding?
Well, they're going to, we're just hiring a consultant that's going to do a review of the project. The consultant will determine a value for the surety for decommissioning, and they'll make a recommendation on an escalator over their life.
Okay.
I was going to say, yeah, because if I'm not mistaken, it's a 20-year life, right?
Yeah, or it could go up or down.
Right, but the general gist is 20-year baseline. It's kind of what we've got to go, you know, stay around.
Right.
All right. Boyd, any preference?
Timeframe on getting back to us? Three weeks for one, and what was the other one? 90 days? No. 26 hours, is it?
That's how many, how much time they ask.
Yeah, so...
I mean, I think it's six of one, half dozen the other, so...
What's the other proposals timeframe from Gina?
Gina, if she doesn't stipulate it, she put the number of hours in there as 26. I don't think that's going to be...
This is to what, come up with a plan to...
A value for the decommissioning and a value for the erosion control sureties.
I could do a whole house in that time. 26 hours of time to put boilerplate stuff together that they probably have.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just saying.
One has a timeframe.
I don't know what you're saying.
2600, you know, I don't know.
So, our next meeting is...
Saying you're not thorough?
On the July 9.
We only have one meeting now.
So, it's three weeks from now, right?
Four.
Four, yeah, but it's more than four weeks. So, this one person, we could get back to the next meeting with an answer.
2600, you know, I don't know.
So our next meeting is.
Saying you're not thorough?
On the July 9th.
We only have one meeting now.
So it's three weeks from now, right?
Four.
Four, yeah, but it's more than four weeks. So this one person, we could get back to the next meeting with an answer.
So you want to wait till then to make a decision?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
I'm saying.
On a response back to that.
For Pear.
Okay, yeah.
They should all have the same time period, why don't they?
I'm sure we could stipulate.
Are you going to pick anyone?
It's a request for the whole.
I need the board to select.
Who's paying for this?
The applicant.
Okay, so she doesn't, she had no preference?
Tell them the three weeks or something.
What did Waldo Lake want?
They didn't have preference either. They didn't get back to me.
Then we'll pick it. Let's do it tonight.
Pick a date.
I would say the person that said three weeks and then we can move on.
Sounds right.
So Pear.
Roll with it.
Pear Corp.
Pear.
We could also do one with one and one with the other.
Just do them all the same, all the same dates. That's what we do when we bid. Be in a certain time.
I would really be, that would be a hard finish point, though. We get it before our next meeting, the answers, because it's a very busy time right now. And if they're saying three weeks, it's got to be three weeks. So I'll make that clear. I mean, I don't have a preference either.
But whatever it is, should be consistent, I guess.
So, beginning?
Yep, well, we don't deal with them directly. You will be, don't know, you've dealt with both of them. Which one's easier to deal with, answer questions?
I've dealt, I've dealt with Stantec more closely than Pear. I know people at Pear and I have confidence in them. So, Stantec's always been responsive and timely and thorough.
They have two bids, huh? Well, we can do one-on-one like you did.
Split it.
Yeah, split it.
Sure. Do it as long as they agree with the stipulation that they're willing to.
Okay, if they don't agree with that, then I'll give them both to the other.
Yes.
Okay.
How's that sound?
That sounds good.
Okay?
Do you need a formal vote on that, Bill?
You'll give Stantec the Douglas Renewable Solar. Because they're coming in a little bit less. And we'll give Pear the ASD wall, not solar, I'll say. We're at 4150 for them. And Stantec is 4300 for them.
Okay. Good enough. I need a motion and a vote.
Yep, okay, so making that a motion?
So.
Second?
Made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Zee. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
It's a hard deadline of three weeks.
Three weeks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes abstain, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to our next public hearing at 7:30. 7:30. Public hearing. How do you say that name?
Iadorola.
Iadorola. Living Trust, application for a modification of a definitive subdivision plan, 12 and 14 Depot Street. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81K through 81G-G, and the Town of Douglas, rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Douglas, the Douglas Planning Board will hold a public hearing on the application for a modification of the definitive subdivision plan. The proposed change to the previously approved subdivision will be by modifying the meets and bounds of the existing unnamed private road and to reconfigure the extensive ownership, land, and features thereon. Properties are located at 12 and 14 Depot Street, MAP 163, castle 123, MAP 163, castle 124, owned by Iadorola Living Trust, 12 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass., and formerly owned by Kevin Bliss, 500 Broncos Highway, Mapleville, Rhode Island, as shown on the definitive subdivision plan of land by Andrew Survey and Engineering, Inc., dated September 26, 1997. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 11, 2019, at 7:30 in the Municipal Center Community Meeting Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. A copy of this middle is available for viewing in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed submittal should appear at the time and place designated. Curtis Smacks, Jr., Chairman, Douglas Planning Board, public hearing is now open.
Good evening. My name is Byron Andrews, Andrew Survey and Engineering, and I present Iadorola this evening. I have some criticized copies here from the House poll. I colored them in and they, and we had some comments from Bill yesterday. We haven't been able to fully address all of them, but we have addressed some of them.
What's this, this is six-unit buildings? Six units each of them?
They're the same, they're the same copies.
I got your analysis. Didn't know the context.
Thank you.
Six-unit buildings?
So this is actually just down the road. As a matter of fact, on my way here, I was in a rush, but I hadn't enough time to go through there. Just give it one last look. A bit of history on this project, as much as I've been able to put together. These buildings were built 20 or 30 years ago. And about 20 years ago, 1997, a definitive subdivision was approved after these buildings were built, to the best of my knowledge, creating this cul-de-sac in separate. And these two parcels had already been deleted, but creating that cul-de-sac. So the, I have a copy of the original approval and approved waivers. And the waivers were for most of the items involved because it had already been constructed. We are also asking for waivers on most of the requirements of a definitive subdivision because there is no construction that is proposed on this. What's actually proposed is actually pretty simple and call it a subdivision modification is a little grand, but, you know, according to the regulations, that's how it has to proceed. So Mr. Iadorola is contemplating selling these lots and also selling this cul-de-sac, retaining this land here. Now, he had built his yard to near the edge of where the pavement is. He has retaining walls here, he has some landscaping here, his driveway goes in here and he has a fence here. So what he would like to do is separate out a narrow wedge here and to combine it with the existing house lot, a section of the house lot here would be combined with this lot so that the house lot would end up with the same amount of area that it started with. The issue of this, really, part of it comes down to the width of the roadway. The subdivision requirements call for a 60-foot roadway. Originally, this was variable width. It went from something like 51 to 48. It wasn't, these lines weren't parallel. What we propose is to create this line, parallel with this line, with a 30-foot width. That would accommodate his yard, what he's built there, and also would give enough room past the existing pavement to maintain it. And there are no plans to widen the paving or anything along those lines, so we feel that would be sufficient.
Is it parallel?
Is the green thing a proposed cul-de-sac?
Optical.
As opposed to?
Really one of those lines with the hair in it?
The green is all, the green is what's proposed.
No, not the circle, the green circle.
The green circle is existing. These yellow lines are the existing lines for this parcel, the yellow lines here. And these green lines will be the new lines, so this would be what you would, you would go from shape like this to a slightly shorter, wider rectangle.
But no changes were made.
The cul-de-sac was, the cul-de-sac was never built. It's on pavement, but it doesn't exist.
The green circle.
Yes.
Right, yeah. There were some restrictions in here. I believe this wet area over here, so, you know, it wasn't really practical to build a cul-de-sac in here. They have a pretty big parking area. And while the regulations for cul-de-sacs say you need 100 feet for turnaround, and the parking area doesn't have 100 feet, but it does have about, you could put a 95-foot radius circle on there, so it's close to the requirement.
So, but people are parking there for the 12 units are parking there, and if a fire truck had to come in and turn around, with all the cars parked there, how do they do that?
The cars would have to move.
And if the owners aren't around? They tow them out and the fire's going and the truck doesn't turn around?
There is, there is more.
I know it's been there.
Been there, that's how, that's the deal, that's.
The other, is there an opportunity to subdivide this? Because it's 2.13 acres, so you only need 20,000 square feet.
The original plan said no for the subdivision.
Oh, did it?
Well, it's 12 units, it's like.
Yeah, I'll have some input.
Oh, okay. All right, and then the other thing was, you mentioned that the lines are going to be parallel? Or did you mean the new line?
The new line.
Is it parallel?
Yeah, this new line right here is parallel with this one.
It isn't.
It isn't?
No, 1640641, the other 660338.
Okay, that was, that was my error.
Yeah, so then I was looking at that retaining wall that you have, is that in brown?
Yes, yes.
So I'm sure that you'll end up just going around the corner there, right? So.
Yeah.
As it, as it stands right now, but.
Is this much to do with nothing? I mean, why?
Because of the fence and all that jazz in the guy's yard.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of stuck between a modest requirement of just expanding his yard to what he's utilizing, to the complicated.
Oh, right, so you're adding, going back to where he built the retaining wall, so he.
So you couldn't just give him an easement for that sliver and call it a day?
It's taken away his backyard.
Leave the plan and say that he gets to have all that land right there to use forever?
We did discuss that, but his, his, his desire is to, is to have that as a separate piece. He doesn't want to have.
But because of that, he's giving up in a very narrow lot with no limited, with limited backyard, not that it's, I care about the house, but I wouldn't want to give up another, what, 30 feet of depth of backyard or 40 feet?
Yeah, he wants to.
That's all, that's all wetland, narrow. That's where a stream goes.
It's foot for foot, it's irrelevant.
So will the lines be parallel in the end?
They, actually, they will not. And that was my mistake, saying it was parallel. What I, what I meant to say is the minimum width is 30 feet of the street, but, you know, I can see.
What's going to happen with the, as you exit the driveway?
The driveway for the house?
For the two houses here, they got that corner there.
Pretty changes, right?
Yeah, they, they would have the same access they have now. There'd be no change.
Because the wall's already there.
Right, wall's there, the pavement's there.
And two cars can comfortably fit without falling to the one side? Where that retaining wall is?
Yeah. Oh, oh, yeah, I'm sure there's enough where the retaining wall is. With the pavement would be the only difference. It looks like the pavement is, as I scale it here, about 17 feet in width, so that should be enough to accommodate two years.
It already exists.
Not going very fast, but I don't imagine it would be going very fast at that point.
I'm just wondering, is that a cliff on that side?
The retaining, it drops down past the retaining wall. But it's pretty much, the grade is pretty much insane up to 200.
Okay, so you can't further subdivide it, that was the deal on that?
I mean, that's what the original plan said. I mean, I'm, I mean, we, we used to have 50-foot right-of-way for subdivision. We went to 60 now because we have utilities and the right-of-ways and everything now. I don't like the idea of reducing it from 50 to 30. I mean, it's, it's a subdivision, you know?
Yeah, but when was this?
I'm not crazy about, I don't.
Sorry, you're just saying, just, why, just leave it as it is?
Why doesn't, you might as well just leave it as it is, sell it.
Because it used to be 52, is that what you're saying?
Well, they're reducing it from 50 feet wide to 30 feet wide.
But it used to be, existing right now was 52.
Yeah.
Right? Because the 22 you're taking away, 22.24 feet?
Yeah, yeah, so it's wide as 25.
Phil, what's up? Why are they here?
Yeah, can I, can I jump in, please? Jumping at the bit? Okay, this, this project originally came into the board first for a special permit for the two buildings. And I asked Byron if he could furnish a copy of that special permit so we could review it, see what the conditions in the special permit were and make sure that those conditions were in fact met. Secondly, with regard to the plan that was approved, I'm not sure what year, do you know what year?
1997.
97. There were two notes on the plan. The first note said that the lot with the building shall not be further subdivided, but there's no deed restriction or anything to that effect that would prohibit that. So there is a note on the plan, but that's the extent of it. The other note is that the road shall remain private, okay? Typically, as many of you know, when we have a private way, we have some mechanism or a homeowners association to make sure that the road is maintained in perpetuity so it does not eventually fall on the town to do these things. Now, when I went out there, I did circulate some photos to the board that I took, and I think Byron and I shared them with you. With, the road itself has a lot of alligator cracking, it has a lot of cold patch on it, it has actually stone where the culvert is with no pavement. And so for me, I'm concerned about the people that are living out there and if in fact Mr. Iadorola is looking to sell it, you know, we don't know who's coming in. We want to make sure those people are going to have safe and convenient access to their building. Now, if it's an opportunity, he's coming in with this request, you can see clearly on the plan that the cul-de-sac does not hit its mark with regard to the right-of-way. I would suggest they also modify that to account for the, where the paving is. There's a dumpster that's located in the right-of-way. There's also something that looks like a well right next to the dumpster. You know what that is, Byron?
There's a, there's a, there's a sewer manhole right here, is that where you?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know it's a sewer manhole.
No, well, it's a sewer.
It's a sewer manhole?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And the road is built as now, it's 30 feet, the same size as Depot Street.
So.
And there's no problem with turning around on Depot.
But it's a dead end.
Why would there be a problem turning around?
That structure is nothing like any manhole for a sewer cover that we have in town, so I don't, I, I don't.
It's raised, it's raised above the ground, so that.
But it's in the right-of-way for the cul-de-sac.
Okay, I'm just pointing it out, it's not shown on the plan. It's not shown on the plan, so we don't know.
What do you mean it's not shown on the plan?
It's not shown on the plan.
There is a sewer manhole with a rim.
Oh, well, that's, it's new.
Next to the concrete pad.
Based on your comments.
Yeah, okay. The, the other thing is, again, you know, you have a significant amount of wetlands that are going through the strike, through the site with a perennial, or intermittent stream to a perennial stream. The, did you show the water and sewer coming out to Depot?
We showed what we could locate at this time. Like I said, we had limited time, so we, we got what we could. We have to show the sewer here, so we have the sewer out in the street, but we don't have, we don't know what the direct connection is with the sewer.
So the concern is, are the utilities located in that wedge that Mr. Iadorola would like to acquire?
I have, I have applied plan to the sewer.
So we need to show that on the drawing?
Right, he has it, but you don't have it.
And then are we going to name this street?
I think for safety reasons, it should be named something.
Yeah, with a sign.
And, you know, I'm not sure how people living there will respond to change in address because that's always a pain.
Well, they, where they, yeah.
Peel box?
Rear?
Well, it's on, it's, they have a Depot Street address.
The Depot, yeah.
It's 12 and 14 or something like that.
Everything to the O box there.
That's okay.
Okay.
Well, if it's been that way for 30 years, 25 years, leave it that way then, you know?
I'm just raising these questions for the board. So. The fee, obviously. You know, that needs to be remedied.
Yeah, I have to discuss that with Mr. Byron.
Were we able to find a copy of the special permit with the conditions? Has that been located yet?
The original?
Yeah.
I do have the conditions approval.
For the subdivision or the special permit?
For the subdivision, I believe.
No, I'm talking special permit. We have the subdivision.
Okay.
Okay, I see that the special permit was approved allowing the use. I'm asking if you have a copy of it.
I don't believe so. If, if we do, I didn't put it in there.
Phil, can I ask the pointed question? Why, why are they here? Why are we doing, why are we reviewing this? Other than being asked?
It's a modification to an approved subdivision.
Right, so, so the modification from the owner wanted to incorporate that wall as part of the property and that's why they're here.
They're changing the property lines with the right-of-way.
Right.
Is why they're here.
Right. And that's why they're here, because they want to do that. Isn't as though something, you know, a new building's being put up or something else is changing.
No, but, but, but you have to understand.
We have to respond to that.
No, hold on, hold on. By their submitting a modification, it opens the world of the subdivision review process.
Right.
Okay? So I'm raising concerns with the quality of the roadway.
I agree, we agree.
Okay?
Yeah, this is kind of a can of worms.
Right.
I mean, if we're, it's, right, it's a modification, but it, right, it opens the doors to us looking at the subdivision, the condition of the subdivision.
It was not done.
The turn, the turnaround for the cul-de-sac, for the fire trucks, or something like that. That all comes into play now because of this modification.
Right, right.
So, so this, the, the original subdivision was approved as a one-cheap plan showing just the property lines. It really didn't show any improvements. So, so this, the, the original subdivision was approved as a one-sheet plan showing just the property lines. It really didn't show any improvements. And it had literally a site recitation of the subdivision construction requirements. So there was really no standards for the construction of this thing.
It's a long time ago.
Right, right.
So, want to ask you about the turnaround with the safety, I mean, granted, it's been there. But today, we're asking for turnarounds for fire trucks and things like that. It's a dead end, right? If all the cars are parked there, they're all locked, it could be an issue, so, so should, talk to us.
Yeah, I'd have to have Byron give some input on that. I'm not sure of where the vehicles parked out there. I know it's along the perimeter. I'm not sure how much that encroaches on the turnaround radius and stuff like that, Byron, I don't know. So that's something I would put to you. But, but certainly, we should have the turnaround within the right-of-way.
Striped as such, or anything. Don't park here, right?
Yeah, park, show the parking spaces, show adequate turnaround.
Yeah, that's a good point. Them all facing in a radius, or however it is. And do your radius for a turnaround for the fire trucks.
So, with regard to the no further development of Lot Two, what was called Lot Two, I don't think you labeled these lots, did you, Byron?
Uh, we didn't label Lot Two, and we just labeled according to the assessors' column.
We should label them, and...
Lot One twenty-three.
I think we're going to need some, some restrictions that are a little more solid in terms of further subdividing the land. And I put the general question out there, is there another way, if, if in fact the, the purpose of this is simply to protect the fence and the wall and the shrubs, is there another, another way to accomplish that? I mean, if that's the goal, I mean, I don't, I don't think anybody really wants to go down this road.
No.
Of micromanaging a project that was approved twenty years ago. But, I mean...
If you're going to open the can.
We have, I feel obligated to look at these things.
You've got to look in.
How many two-bedrooms, how many one-bed, do you, how many, there?
I don't know. Mr. Iadorola, do you know how many apartments are?
Twelve.
Twelve.
How many bedrooms total, do you think?
Uh, there's two one-bedrooms and ten three, uh, two bedrooms. There's no three bedrooms.
So there's twenty-two bedrooms, uh, total twenty-two bedrooms, probably?
Uh, twenty-two bedrooms.
Yeah, yeah, twenty-two, thank you.
In, in those, in how many structures? In all those?
There are three, three structures.
Total of twelve amongst the three.
Yeah, these are the apartment buildings, and this is a, a separate residential house. So we're talking about the, how many apartments are in these two buildings?
Yeah, I don't see why, is there a reason why you have to play with that frontage? Like, there's nothing there, the fence isn't there, the driveway isn't there.
Well, the retaining wall is, is there.
Yeah.
So we kind of, you know, we can't really, well, we kind of have to go to here. I mean, we could widen it out, but that sort of seems, or, you know, beside the point.
What's the parking requirement generally for the twenty-two bedrooms? Is that how, how does it work in this town? How many cars is, should be straight?
That's a good question. This is, this is a unique phenomenon. We don't have this kind of thing anywhere else in town. I think one other location.
No, but I mean, what's in the bylaw now for parking?
I'd have to look it up, section five of the zoning.
But it could be twenty-two cars, twenty-two bedrooms. So I mean, you've got to, would you look it up and then let's stripe out?
Sufficient parking, I guess.
Yeah, make sure, and remember, there should be some guest parking, so. Cool, I mean, it's good to know.
So, so the big thing here, Byron, for me, is a homeowners' association or some mechanism to ensure that the road will be properly maintained in perpetuity.
Okay.
Okay.
Does, just to visit back on, we had an issue with the width. Is the width a, a serious impediment, or is something...
I understand that the width going to thirty feet would be probably sufficient for the cars that are going in and out of here. I don't like taking what is the norm and reducing it, though. We require fifty feet, and, no, I don't want other people coming in and saying, oh, we want to reduce ours to thirty feet.
Oh, so you're reducing it because you're taking the land back, and then that's, I see. Something that people can point to.
I don't understand why you can't accomplish this with Tracy, with an easement.
Just a small, little pizza sliver on the stuff that he wants to make sure nobody touches and call it a day. I mean, this is a can of worms. It's not, it's not just an easy thing to do.
What are we talking about, an easement on the small piece of land?
Yeah, the, the strip, the piece from the stone.
This has gone too far.
Well...
This thing was built by Kevin Bliss thirty years ago.
Yeah.
And we're trying to get today's rules and regulations squeezed into that subdivision. And it's just gone, gone too far.
Why do anything about it?
Yeah.
We stand the law, and we have to abide the law. Common sense should dictate here what's going on here.
Yes.
We've, we have dumpsters going in there that have no trouble turning around. They're huge trucks. There are more than twelve cars parked there. There are probably closer to eighteen, as far as I know. Not every apartment has two cars. And when I ran my plumbing and heating business out of twelve Depot Street, I made sure no semis came into the neighborhood. I demanded that a, a lift truck with a box truck come in, and some of them were humongous. And they had no problem turning around in that street. And that stone wall we're talking about, if you demand a fifty-foot entrance, you better bring about eight feet of fence.
No, that's not what, right, we're saying that create, no, they're not saying remove the wall, at all.
No, but you demand a fifty-foot road.
An easement, no, just leave, it's only the easements.
I understand, let's get by the easement, go back to where we, how we got here, okay? It was said that we, we demand a fifty-foot road. Well, it's only thirty feet wide.
No, 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 no. Right-of-way, the, the width of the property lines.
Okay, but I mean, they have to, there is a, a six-foot drop where that stone wall is. So you're not going to have a, a right-of-way because the land, the topograph, topographical, uh, shape of that land doesn't commit to that. That's why the road was only built thirty feet instead of fifty-two feet.
Well, no one's, no, that's not the reason why. The easement is fifty-two feet. We didn't require that the fifty-two feet be paid. The easement going into the property is fifty-two feet.
But you will never use.
We require sixty now, because for the development, for the utilities and stuff like that.
And I don't fault you for this. All I'm saying is it's gone further than I want it to go.
Yeah, it has probably, yeah.
So if the easement is the answer, then that's what we'll do. And save the board a lot of trouble, and save Andrew's engineering a lot of trouble, and, and my family a lot of trouble. So let's just remove...
That would, that would be your easiest solution to, to what you want to do, is just do an easement.
Yeah, yeah, well, I just, you know, I, I was under the impression when I bought that Lot One from Kevin Bliss, that the property line went to the stone wall. It was never discussed to me that it didn't. And all of a sudden, when I bought the two six families, I discovered that there's a fifty-two-foot road in there.
Right, easement.
After the fact, like ten years after the...
Let me see what you're trying to do, you're trying to clean it up.
I was trying to just...
Clean it up.
Why the, why the heck did they build the road thirty feet?
Yeah.
And then that stone wall was there, the granite wall.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't realize it at the time, so that's why I'm doing what I'm doing. Because if I sell the, the two six families, then I'm going to be at the, at the mercy of the buyer. Because he's got that fifteen-foot strip on my land.
You could reserve the rights before you sell it. I think, you can speak with fire about it.
Yeah, but it's only an easement, but I got a fence on that, okay? Is the fence in, in violation?
It's there now. So, so it must be in violation now.
Well, that's the question I was asking, you know, is the board going to push me on that?
We weren't going to say anything.
It's all with the easement, Byron. Let's get out of this mess.
So we're going to, if you're considering withdrawal, you would need a written withdrawal.
I mean, if you want to discuss it first.
So then we'll continue it, and then we'll, we'll decide.
We can see why you were trying to clean that up. I understand.
It's obvious. Somebody's got to clean it up.
It's a sticky wicket on this end, though. So, the applicant is considering the withdrawal of this seminal. We will continue the public hearing to our next meeting, which is in July. And if anybody has any questions, they can come back at that time and, and ask. Or if you have a question you want to ask right now, it is a public hearing. We'll, we'll take questions from anybody that wants to ask anything. Any comments or questions on this? Okay, seeing none, hearing none? Motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for twelve and fourteen Depot Street, application for modification of a subdivision plan dependent to July ninth at...
Seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both abstain, the motion carries. Okay, so the public hearing is...
Thank you.
July ninth?
Yes.
At seven thirty. Thank you, Byron.
Thanks, Byron.
Yeah, if you need me to sign, just say yes.
Okay. Let the record show that Tracy is leaving the meeting. She has another question to go to.
Thank you.
And she'll be out for the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, take it easy.
Bye.
Bye, pass eight. See you, Trace.
All right, I'll modulate it.
I'm tired of this.
Well, we're doing it. Bringing the eighteen. Get it done.
Twelve Depot, that's the first house after the church. Couple houses up, it's a long block. After the church. Yeah, it's after the church, yeah. All right, next on our agenda. Seven twenty-five?
Anyway, I never knew anything about it.
Van Opland?
Yep.
Okay, seven twenty-five, Van Opland.
What's the size of these drawings?
Put them in your pocket.
Well, look at all the toe holes.
So this plan, um, this is a plan...
Can you give you a name?
Travis Brown, Andrew Survey and Engineering. So this is a plan that was previously signed to split up these lots. Uh, the purpose of this plan is to create parcel A, which is now on the backside of map two seventy-four, lot six point four. Um, so that parcel would be conveyed to Lot Two on this plan, which is map two seventy-four, lot six point three.
Oh, so that's going this way? This is becoming part of this?
Correct, correct. So it's being taken off of Lot One, so it's virtually unusable for Lot One. Uh, Lot One still maintains required frontage area setbacks. There's an existing house on that lot now. Ninety thousand square feet, which is, which is shown.
Right here, Kaelin Odda, yeah, this one.
That's simply what it is, that's it.
So there's a house on Lot One?
So there's a house on Lot One, there's also a house there, yes.
But nothing here now, currently?
No.
And this is being combined?
That's being combined with parcel A.
Right. So this, that's what the Z-lines are for.
Yes, to show that that parcel would be conveyed to that lot.
So this is becoming part of this, this, and I don't know why it was what it was at one point, but it's being conveyed as one combined lot now.
Bill, Bill, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question about what you're labeling proposed shared drive. Isn't there an easement there, Travis?
No, I looked back at the original plan, and that's exactly how it was labeled on the original plan.
See, now, that, that's concerning to me, because I, on our assessor's maps, it does show a dash line, which kind of implies an easement. This is concerning, because the crossing, as you can see the wetland, the crossing location is at the narrowest point. You want to make sure that when they go to sell Lot Two, they in fact will use that as a shared drive with an easement going to the lot. So if we don't have a reserved easement there, they would be entitled to cross the wetland at the wider area. And...
Oh, because we would be putting them with no access.
Correct.
Right over here.
So we cannot approve.
Well, I'm not saying we...
This is wider, but it's...
No, we can't.
This goes to access, okay? Now, now, a plan was approved before, and I want to make it clear, this is only transferring parcel A from Lot One to Lot Two.
That's it.
Okay, that's what the purpose of this plan is. So, so I've always been under the impression that they were going to have an easement over that narrow part of the wetland. So I did ask Travis to show that easement.
This being the narrow part that exists.
Correct, with the dimensions, so that access to Lot Two could be provided.
Is that, is that like one of those little bridges over that wetlands, is there?
I'm not sure what's out there now.
Yeah, there's retaining walls on both sides, and there's a pipe underneath.
Like it is over, off of U Street that was just done by Louis there?
Yes.
That's good, that's, but, so...
So we need more terminology written into it? Or not at this time? I, I don't know that you can deny it, I just... I know. Yeah, I mean, Lot Two already exists. We're just transferring parcel A from one owner to the other, but I'm just disappointed that, that in fact there's no easement.
So do we add language that, you know, we don't want to be the responsible ones now? With, they, they have, like, they have to go to conservation to get a crossing over here.
I don't think you can, I mean, or...
No, 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 no.
This is already pre-existing. If they come in here and build or whatever, then that... Nothing's changing from an access perspective.
So who catches that?
I was just surprised to see that, because I think the previous land showed proposed easement when Karen Keegan came in at some point.
It may have been on a different design, but I chased deeds and plans, and there was nothing ever...
I want to ask, when they build a house, propose to build a house?
They're using the shoe driveway, it's already there.
No, and I see it.
So it's already there. They don't have to go in front of anybody.
So with, with Travis's promise that they will have easement?
The same owner owns both of these, which is Josh Adet, which is here. You know, if he ever conveyed Lot Two, obviously, he would have to maintain rights for those people that would buy.
But everything else, all of my other comments have been addressed, so...
Easement to the driveway, right, to the other parcel, is that what you're saying?
The easement is for that second lot that you own, Josh, where the crossing is. On the original plan, it was an easement to get back to that lot. They'll have an additional wetland crossing at the street.
Right, we just want to make sure. Otherwise, it has frontage and some...
I mean, I, I think Travis has done as good as he can. He looked for it, and I was just surprised to not see it, because I thought it existed.
So you're saying not see...
I'm going to just go here.
Yet another lot.
This is a different lot. So we're not changing any lot lines on that lot. But that is where the easement presumably would be to access the Lot Two, which we are conveying.
Right, through the narrow part of the, it's already existing. Makes sense.
So, I don't think you have a choice.
See, the driveway's already there, but now they added this to get in here.
No, it's, it's been on the other prints, just that there's no rotation.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, but we'll be signing my lot, but I don't...
That's okay.
But it's the same notation that was on the original.
On the original.
All right, any other comments, Bill? Anything else?
Nope, everything else, Travis addressed, so.
Board, any further comments, questions? Want to have a motion?
Oh, this is just an R, this is a motion. I'll make a motion to endorse an R plan for Joshua C. and Kaplan M. Adet at, for Long Street Developers Incorporated at one fifteen Walnut, Walnut Street.
Motion made by Mike G., seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both abstain, motion carries.
Then start signing while it's on the table.
Bill, is this the new size of my lot?
Yeah, it's mandated.
Bill, you want us to just start signing?
Yes, please. Yep. Okay, just twenty-four by seventeen?
Eighteen by twenty-four. Here, you want a pen? You sign it? Can't tell you what a C-size or a D-size. If I did, I'd be arrested.
This is C.
A is eight and a half.
A, eleven by seventeen?
Yeah.
What do you say this?
C.
Eighteen by twenty-four.
Right, and twenty-four by thirty-six is D. He's having thirty by something.
That one's still working?
Thirty by forty-two.
That one's still working?
What do we just do? Nothing, nothing new fancy.
Seven forty-five, hang on. That's it, right there.
Okay, anybody else aside?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we can't. Yeah, those are flawed.
Twenty-two here, is that all I have?
No, I got one.
We don't, we don't sign these.
Yeah, we should sign, yeah, but we can do that, you can do it.
Why don't we do it while we're passing?
I'll sign them at the end of the night.
Give everybody one to start with.
Two, oh. My last name. You need some ink on yours.
I do. All right, you can see it. I can read it.
And you have one with two.
Yeah, it's just a copy to us anyway, so. You already did that one, so. How do we re-ink these suckers? See that, see this little line right here?
Yep.
Put that on whatever line you're signing on. And it'll, it'll, yeah. Then it'll put a right on them.
Yeah, I think that.
Yeah, that's better, yeah, there you go, that's better, but it went below, you had it at an angle, but. So, like I said, how many getting for these guys? Yeah, we'll figure that out after. We don't have any more to sign tonight anyway.
All right, you just signed that. Caswell Court.
Yes.
And then you have a pen?
Yeah, I'll sign them and date them at the end of the night.
So, we need four.
We just want to leave them right here for me. All right, does anybody have this in their packet?
Did you do this?
I have it mine, make sure you have it yours. Which is going to be on next day.
Mike?
Yeah, I have. Press our third copy, please.
You woke it up.
It's a little practice, maybe my dear Tracy. Make sure you did them all. All right, does anybody have this in their packet?
No.
Can I see it?
Yep, pre-application.
We're going to take that next. It's under discussion. Caswell Court? Okay, Bill, that good with you?
Yep.
All right. All right, is anybody here for that?
Uh-oh.
Everybody in the room? This is just for discussion. By St. Dennis Church, go right up, turn up by St. Dennis, and just keep going right to the end.
Oh, that's the, um.
That is fine.
Carter.
So, for the record, Travis Brown, Andrew Survey and Engineering, here on behalf of the applicants, Carol and Matt March, who are also in attendance tonight. So, this land is owned by Bill Carter, map one thirty-seven, parcel six, it's a total of about eighty acres. Caswell Court is here off this map, and we will be proposing on this plan to tie in and create a flexible development subdivision. So, prepare to yield plan, which I'll go through first, that sets the basic maximum number of lots on this property. So, this property lies in two zones, so Village Residential, which the zoning line is here, this portion is in Village Residential. This back portion is rural agricultural. So, the lot size for Village Residential is twenty thousand, lot size in rural agriculture will be ninety thousand. So, on this plan, we provided a total of sixty-five lots, providing access from Caswell Court with this loop here, a dead-end cul-de-sac here, and then ultimately, a second egress point here, which is out to Pond Street.
So, let me just jump in here, Travis. Just so the board understands, because I know some of you haven't gone through a flexible development process. The way this works is the first step in the process is they would show us what they could do for a maximum build-out scenario on the project, and that's called the base maximum number of units. And then, that's the starting point for their flexible development. He's not asking for that tonight, this is all concept, what Travis is talking about, so, you know, it's just kind of like, this is what they're thinking, and they're looking for some feedback from the board, so.
Yeah, so ultimately, yeah, this is informal, we want to just get pre-application, get the board's initial input based on what we've come up with here. Again, sixty-five units, so that's a basic maximum number. So, from that, under flexible development, you get up to fifty percent of that basic maximum. So, from this, we'd get ninety-seven total units. So, we jump back to this.
You get a fifty percent increase on a flexible.
Fifty percent increase. So, part of that is leaving open space, which we have done. So, forty percent of the land would be dedicated to open space, which is basically this untouched area back here. Would also, under the required flexible development, you need a hundred-foot buffer, basically, that comes around the project. Now, you notice the lots are within that, but the back of those lots would remain vegetated.
So, these are multiple townhomes? So, that's why it looks like so much land, because they're clustered into.
They are clustered. So, under Village Residential, you get twenty thousand square foot lots.
I witnessed it. But how many units are shown here?
So, this is a total of ninety-seven. So, there's fifty-two single-family homes. Fifty-two single-family homes, and there's forty-five townhouses. So, the townhouses would be clustered kind of in pods. So, it ends up being that those units become fifty-five and over, which is one of the density bonus criteria. We get additional units. So, we provide a flexible development unit count, which you should have as part of the application. So, as part of this, thirty-two, like I said, thirty-two acres or forty percent of this area would remain open space. You get density bonus for over fifty-five units, so we're proposing forty-five of those units. However, we can only use up to twenty by, twenty percent of the maximum basic number. So, that equates to thirteen units in the density bonus that we can get for over fifty-five.
So, how many total units are over fifty-five, are proposed?
Forty-five on this plan.
Forty-five over fifty-five, and that all gets registered deed restrictions and all that?
Um, I believe it does, yes.
Bill? I'm sorry, what was your question?
Deed restrictions would be put on, under this?
Yes, yes.
So, and who checks on that, at closings and all that, to make sure?
Well, it would be a deed restriction, so they couldn't do it.
Yeah, right.
By whom, is it, the realtor would ask?
It's just like any other deed restriction. I mean, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure who monitors that, but.
I mean, as a realtor, I've never asked.
It's not a zoning issue.
It's not, it's the lawyer at the end that checks the deed.
Yeah, it's the neighbors that might, you know, might be aggrieved by it, I don't know.
There's only so much you can do to that, and that's the way the system works.
Right.
We would check the language on the front end to make sure it met our requirements.
No, no, you're right, should, I mean, I've seen fifty-five and overs turn into families, does happen.
I don't see.
Eagle view.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a deed restriction, you can't.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, I could go down this list, again, this is preliminary, based on the criteria in the zoning bylaw. This is what we think we can get under that bylaw, ninety-seven units.
Yep.
There's other criteria on here, again, affordable units, which we've taken into account, two bonus units permitted for that. A cash contribution that we've identified that could get you four extra units. So, in summary, the maximum units is sixty-five, like I said. The density bonus units would get you twenty more units, and then, the required affordable units out of this project would be twelve. So, that eighty-five plus the twelve would bring you to the ninety-seven total units under the zoning bylaw. So, there's public water and sewer available, both in Caswell Court and in Pond Street, that we, which we would be utilizing as part of this. We've identified some preliminary stormwater areas, which are generally the low points of this site. There is a mapped wetland, which we show here on the plan, and another one back here. Presumably, that would be left in open space, remain in its natural condition. So, we're proposing thirty-seven hundred feet of road, basically, from here to here. And that doesn't include these little pods for fifty-five and over. So, this is a sixty-foot right-of-way shown on this draw. There's an existing forty-foot strip here at Pond Street that we would need to tie into, and also, Caswell Court, which I think is a variable width.
Are hydrants being put in? Are hydrants being put in with the public water?
They would need to be, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, how does fire trucks get access into those pods and turn around and all that?
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the questions we would have for fire, to have adequate access, right? Maybe a turnaround or something.
It's going to be asked, it's going to be required.
Sure will, yep.
Underground utilities?
Yes. So, it'd be drainage as part of this electric water and sewer, all would be in the roadway, and that road would be.
No rain gardens.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Are they planning on tying in the Pond Street to have that as a viable road, road? Or they just?
Yes.
So, that's going to be in and out.
Connection, yep.
How's the grading? I've been up in that property and watched it.
It's, it's not bad, I mean, there's a lot of lines on here, but you have four eighty here, you got four fifty here, this is kind of a low spot, and then it goes back up, you know, four sixty-eight, so there's pretty reasonable grades.
Yeah, right, further out.
Further out, yeah. I think it, no, it actually drops.
No, I meant up.
Up, up this way.
The lots that you had shown are the lots
underlapped.
For the conventional zoning. Right?
The first sheet.
The, the first sheet. The first sheet I had shown, meet conventional zoning.
Yeah, you got it, yeah.
Yeah, so that zone line is here, so any lot that's within the Village Residential would meet the twenty thousand, any lot that's in rural agriculture would be ninety thousand.
Any idea around those townhomes, bedrooms-wise?
Um, not sure, probably two to three bedroom.
Right, so you could have three hundred people here in this place.
Well, fifty-five and over are the townhouses, so unless they have a bunch of kids when they're sixty and over.
Well, they could be, you know, you could have, in the singles, you could have three or four, and then, in the others, you'd have two, in the fifty-five and over, partners, you know, married people or otherwise, so.
Yeah, normally, if it's five and older, you know, one bedroom's used or whatever.
Right, but, yeah.
Bill, any questions at this time?
No, just a couple of comments. I know perhaps the existing road networks didn't anticipate this kind of development. So, that's something that Travis should think about as part of any application that comes in. And, you know, we just had a discussion a few minutes ago about, you know, the width of the right-of-way, and I know that parcel going out to Pond Street. Part of the, part of the linkage to Pond Street gets them through the road length limitation, okay? The cul-de-sac length limitation, so if they just come in off Caswell, then they got an issue. So, so they want to link to Pond Street, and as Travis indicated, that's forty feet wide, reserved. It's, it's obvious to me that it was intended for a right-of-way, but it's narrower than even the subdivision regulations required at the time, which was fifty feet at the time, so.
When was that one built, do you know?
That was built before I got here, twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Do you know what?
Twenty-seven years ago.
Twenty-seven years.
Twenty-seven years ago?
It's almost thirty years, right?
So, so, the other, the other issue that arises, assuming the board's okay with the forty-foot wide thing, is something called the derelict fee statute, that certainly, the applicant should look into and get, get a level of comfort with on what that means and what, what that says.
Okay.
Okay.
The connection to Pond Street.
It's called the derelict fee statute?
Derelict fee?
Yes.
That connection to Pond Street, we've tried to plan our subdivisions just for that purpose, we have connectivity to to not have dead ends all over town. So, this is a perfect example, one of the first times I've seen it work.
I mean, we, we have given relief in cases that predated our subdivision requirements for the sixty feet down to fifty, but we've not gone down to forty, so.
So, it leaves a lot of open space, that's for sure.
So, they're looking for feedback on the, from the board on this kind of concept, I think.
Caswell Court, the road going into this, how is that road to handle ninety houses?
It's, it's a typical town road.
Just a small little town road?
It's, yeah, I mean, it's.
Goes right past St. Dennis on the corner. Goes right past St. Dennis on the corner.
So, for example, Caswell Court doesn't have sidewalks, for example. You know, is there an opportunity to get sidewalks as a result of this, because of the number of people that are going to be there?
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know what I mean, is there?
No, to downtown.
It's a country road. It's not wide, it's not big enough, it's not real narrow either, like some of them, but it doesn't have sidewalks. The pavement, I don't, can't remember the last time it was paved, to be honest with you, it's, it's had some rough areas. But it's always been a dead end, so that's, you know.
Right, we never saw the through traffic like we would see now.
Through traffic will make a significant impact.
Big impact, because now, even from Pond Street, they could use that as a throughway, instead of going around, whether they shoot, cut it up through. So, I mean, you're definitely.
Change the way of life for everybody on campus.
Right, you'll be changing everything, the whole nine yards.
Mr. Chairman? You may. John Blatchford, Pond Street, specifically forty-four Pond Street, right next to where that road is supposed to be going in. If, if you looked at the road, all those lots are all angled, so basically, that road would be going straight through my front yard. Now, I don't have a problem with development, building and so forth, I'm an accountant, this builds economy, I have no issue with you going in there and building this. Calling that a second means of egress, basically, you're dumping one ninety lot development into another ninety lot development, and vice versa. The traffic that's going to increase on Pond Street and on Caswell Court, obviously, is twofold. As you mentioned, that's only a forty-foot width, I just listened to a conversation where you were saying the road should be sixty-foot feet wide.
Easement.
Eastern, I'm sorry, not the road, right, the east. That, that being said, also, that being said, if the road does go through there, my house would be fifteen feet off the road. I don't know, that then includes the road being on my left-hand side, if that's considered frontage as well, where the mandate should be fifty feet to the road. So, and then, there's the derelict fee statute. I've done my homework on that. Basically, if that lot was put there to beginning to be a throughway, be a road, I technically own to the middle of that road, to the middle of that lot. Therefore, I own that lot, and I will not allow a road to go through here, just because of, I mean, if there was a hundred feet between me and that road, I have no issue with that, I get it, I'm for development, I have developers as clients. But where that's going to go fifteen feet off the corner of my house, where I have, not kids right now, but nieces, nephews, pets, it's just not a good thing. I mean, it's, I understand the good for many against the few, but this is, and if I knew it was a through, well, you know, on the maps that I have, it says a non-buildable lot, it does not say a throughway from the beginning, but obviously, that's where it was put there from day one, for a throughway. And if that's the case.
Should be deeded in fee, right?
It should, it should have been deeded in fee, it was not, it was retained by the original developer. And, you know, the, the intent is clear to me, the regs required, you know, projection of the right-of-way to the next budding property, that's what was in, in, at the time. It is narrower than, than the requirement. You know, and there are options, there, this, and I'm not suggesting this is what happened, but it could be a one-way, maybe from Pond Street into the project.
Because I was just looking at something here, yeah.
Couldn't it just be fire exit with a, a key box for the fire department, as a second means, with a gate?
You could do that.
Some others, that's quiet.
You could do that. We, we've had other instances that actually connected to Spring Meadow, which is Pond Street, Toll Court and Pilgrim Court were supposed to connect, and they never did. You know, so, there's, there's opportunities, I think, but, but.
I mean, if I, I want to say one thing.
Yeah, I don't want to get lost in the.
This is just a discussion.
This is thirty thousand-foot view of what, what this is, it's allowable by the regulations. The, I guess, the main feedback, they want to know about that interconnectivity there to Pond Street, because that's going to have an impact on how they design this thing.
It'll trigger some stuff for us, too.
But the butter has stated the case here, and so.
I want to say something here, and I also noticed, if you go from, we'll call it Caswell Court on this road, heading into Pond Street, there's a house directly across that road, and you'll be getting headlights and everything all night long, sitting right there. And I know one thing for myself, I would be livid if that was happening. See the house, see the road, going right at them.
Right, and those details will come out during the submittal.
Making one way or make it restricted or whatever.
Yeah, restricted, yeah.
But, I mean, if you had everybody going from there, going the other way, I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, that, that's.
I mean, like I said, it's just, this is just a preliminary discussion.
Well, that's something that I'm seeing, though, right up the back, I mean, that's a quick.
Right, right.
You pick that right up.
Yeah, unfortunately, it was set up that way.
Right, I know, I mean, back in the day, it was, but I'm, I'm sorry, I mean.
So, so, they're looking for fatal issues, like cul-de-sac length versus interconnectivity, so. So, so, so they're looking for fatal issues like cul-de-sac length versus interconnectivity, so if the board thinks interconnectivity is something that could be explored and you're open to it, and they satisfy themselves on the derelict fee thing, then, you know, is that acceptable? Let's assume derelict fee's not an issue, and that's their issue they need to look at.
Right.
Does this look acceptable to the board, this kind of concept?
Yeah, the kind of concept is what we, we need to look at.
Yeah, I mean.
Probably, but it's, definitely would not want that to be a throughway to that other street, Pond Street. On a daily basis, yeah, I mean, that should be a, like I said, I'm in favor.
That's one of the main things they look at.
I'm in favor of a, you know, for the fire department access that can be inside of the site.
A good tow path or something.
Yeah, you know, people can walk through there maybe, but no cars, no vehicles unless the fire department opens it up for them, emergency access.
And, you know, we're not opposed to that as long as we can get in here and satisfy the board with either an emergency access or a waiver and dead-end length. Right.
Right, but, but, right, emergency access only would, I'd be favorable.
If we, if we decide that, of course, that you don't wanna have that as a, an access, then that's, then the, the length of the cul-de-sacs and the dead-end issue is.
Would become a waiver they're gonna need, right?
Become a definite waiver they would need.
Yeah, but I'd rather.
But that could be used as a, obviously a tight-through loop for water and sewer, right?
Sure.
That would be, that would be a tremendous benefit for, I'm sure, water officials love that.
To make that a big time loop through.
But that's, that's a quiet activity, it's underground.
Right, I know, but I'm saying, as far as still going through.
It would increase everyone's pressure, it would improve our water system.
That's a good thing, but as far as having cars driving by these people's houses every day, that's not something I'm.
Have the, have the easement side of it for the water sewer connection grow through, and maybe having it paved on top or whatever, but kinda gotta watch out on the traffic at that point.
Generally, I think what the board is in agreement with right now is, is that if the access to Pond Street weren't to be allowed, the waiver on the length of the cul-de-sac would probably be.
Might be palatable.
Would probably be acceptable, if, so we would be able to continue with the plan that we're looking at here.
I don't know on which one to go with, I mean, are you saying that you want us to kinda pick between one end or the other? Or this is what?
No, no, no.
I think we wanna go with the flexible.
You wanna go with the flexible, okay.
I think it's better for the town in that it preserves thirty-two acres of.
Well, let's, let, well.
That's a fifty, fifty.
How many townhouses are proposed versus conventional?
So there's forty-five townhouses and fifty-two, so not quite the half of that.
So fifty-two, and then the BMNU was what?
Uh, sixty-five.
So, so there's a reduction in the number of single-family homes that could go out here, translate that into schoolchildren that would be going.
Are you saying fifty-two, two families?
Fifty-two single-family lots.
Single-family lots, but how many, but are you talking about two-family units?
No, a single-family house.
So fifty-two single-family?
Yes.
And then thirty.
And then forty-five.
Forty-five townhomes.
Which is fifty-five overall.
Which is a benefit.
If they wanted duplexes, they would have to get a special permit through this board and then.
Now, if you do go this route, the, the only issue that, as was brought up, is the turnarounds, right. There would have to, there would definitely have to be something here all designed out, where you're not gonna dead-end those roads.
Yeah, it'd have to be a cul-de-sac so that the fire apparatus.
Cul-de-sac, or maybe you're gonna have to lose a couple lots here to make this a drive-through, you know what I mean, down here on the corner? You lose, say, that lot or two lots, and this road is connected there, and this road is connected to another lot.
Yeah, that's.
You know what I'm saying, same drop, or a couple small house lots to accommodate.
You'll have to do some modifications.
But the cul-de-sacs are easy, there's so much land there, you know.
No, they're saving it for, keeping it as open space.
No, I know, but it, relative to the open space, these turnarounds, or for the, for the fire trucks, are miniscule. You can put a quarter on that and it'll fit.
Has to do four of them.
Right, but it's still miniscule compared to the amount of acreage out there.
Yeah, I mean, but they might, the way it's designed, they might have to lose a lot, con a lot of something to make the cul-de-sac, yeah.
But I think they gotta do it.
Yeah, but they've got plenty of room to do it.
Yeah, they've got plenty of room to do it.
They might have to lose a couple, that's.
Yeah, I mean, we really need to think about grading, drainage.
So if we're talking.
And not only that, the, the other idea of doing that by going through that way, is you keep it on the water and sewer, still all the loops. You're not dead-end all the. And they can go through those, with the duplexes, uh, loop that all up, loop it.
Wouldn't be opposed to that, yeah, which is just putting the water and sewer lines for that easement.
Ninety thousand square feet.
As long as they don't knock down a tree, but, no.
I mean, it's.
Barstools, same. They might have to take some.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not, you know. They're gonna put like this around the trees, but no, I, I wouldn't.
And it was brought up, as you heard, the, the only thing that might happen is for a fire truck.
I don't see that this is any different than this.
It's still gotta gate.
This one shows.
For some reason the road gets blocked off, they need another way in there.
Single-family homes, all of them.
Well, we've, we've had that at Pond Street for twenty-seven years, the same thing.
But, I mean, it's gonna come down to whether or not the town has a, a legal access to it or not, if, if it was indeed a fee, it might be a question as to whether we could even use it at all.
Well, if it becomes a proposed road.
Like, again, I'm not opposed to the development, I mean, that's.
We'll have to discuss that further down the road, but, yeah.
Yeah, I guess what we don't wanna get into is having a design, submitting it, getting here, and then we don't have an access, and then it's an issue of the dead-end.
Well, that's why I gotta listen to the applicant and us and put the input in, you know, I'm telling you upfront, and that, I'm, I'm pretty much only in favor of something that would be emergency, cause I've seen it done a lot in, in urban areas and such, where we don't want cut-throughs, but you need the access for emergency vehicles, only.
That's if it's even gonna be allowed.
Right, since it's a road line.
I think, Bill, any further comments, that, that's something we said that we shouldn't have said?
I mean, it's allowable, I think.
It's allowable, for sure.
You know, the question really was the interconnectivity so that the length and the number of units could be.
Yeah.
Achieved, otherwise they'd be limited by cul-de-sac length.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for us, or anything?
No, sorry, anything else?
I think I'm okay.
Okay, okay. We'll look forward to seeing you when you get your plans developed.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Flexible developments, both, uh, special permit and a definitive plan, so you gotta do both, I recommend you do them jointly at the same time.
Same time.
Yep.
I live right down the street from this, grew up down here as a kid, I preferly donate it to the town as open land, but you're gonna have to, I mean, I, I spent a lot of time in that backwoods something. It's a beautiful piece of property, I can see why you wanna develop it, but.
Yeah, I've talked with a few people that have told me the same thing, that they've been on that property a lot.
A lot, yeah, yeah.
My, my intention is to move in there and I'll become a resident here.
Welcome. All right, next item under discussion.
Thanks, yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, uh, we got the GDI discussion item one.
The development was built, so. Could cause some hard, hard work for somebody, but.
All right. And that's my only. Guaranteed builders and developers, pine, sand, and stone, thirty-seven.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, we need.
Good luck. What we got on guaranteed builders, Bill?
So, we got a dust control plan that, um, well, they're here, why don't I let them address them?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Murray Bristol, pine, sand, and stone. Uh, last time we were here, we were discussing, uh, thirty-seven Glen Street, and you guys had some questions as far as the, uh, dust control and, uh, water table. So, dust control on high slopes, you know, it's a, basically it's a hydroseeding procedure that we're kinda asking to, uh, allow, um, you know, it's, uh, basically a covering for the high slopes to stop the, uh, any earth erosion, so. And then for the water table, we submitted a plan which is based off of, uh, Allen Engineering came out and verified the monitoring wells in various positions throughout the property. And we drew a, a plan based on that.
Do you have that planned, Bill?
I, I do, and I, I had a chance to look at it, um, a couple of comments that I had with Murray, um, this, the proposed contours are not the final approved contours. The plan they submitted was one iteration that was discussed during the hearing process, but it extended onto the town property adjacent to the site. And this, this submittal does not show the retaining wall that was approved, so it's a variation from what was approved. So, the base grades are reasonably close to, in either case, the change really has to do with that side slope, and I guess if you should look at the plan in the lower left or the southwest corner of the site.
Yeah.
So, I would suggest that they revise that to reflect the permitted grades, um, but based on what they've submitted, it looks like we have the ten-foot clearance to the base elevations, with the exception of the replication area, which is up in the northwest corner. That looks like it's less than ten feet, but it's above the high groundwater table, I spoke with Steve about it today, and, uh, he said he prefers that being closer to the groundwater table in that area, so.
You're okay with that?
So, um, after we get the new plan, you know, I expect they're gonna continue mining, you know, I, I've agreed with them that they can start, and they're doing what they need to do pending these, you know, incidentals, um, the dust control plan, I think, is great, I think the board should vote to authorize that. And then with regard to the groundwater elevations, revise the plan, submit it, I'll review it, and then hopefully at the next meeting, we'll be at a place where we can approve it.
Okay, all right. And what about the retaining walls?
I don't know what they're gonna, what their plan is.
Ultimately, they're gonna be gone, we're not gonna, we're gonna grade it out to have it all sloped, as opposed to any retaining wall, that's our intent, I haven't seen the plan yet.
Okay.
But, that's our hope, cause it's just.
We're getting along here in the, in the excavating, and I, I usually like to see the plan ahead of time before we.
Right.
Let you go tear it down, bank, and so, I'd like to see it at the next meeting.
Oh, absolutely, I should, I'll, I hope you have it tomorrow.
Excellent.
That'd be great, let's share it to Bill, and then Bill can.
Yeah, and, and, you know, if I'm, I'll make a recommendation, I'll share my recommendation with them, and, you know, I'm very free with my comments, and.
Yeah, no, we'll get together on it, yeah, that's no problem.
All right, board, any questions?
No.
So you wanna vote to approve the dust control and the groundwater?
The groundwater, we're working on, next meeting we'll probably.
We'll just go on, on the dust control.
And especially if they're gonna revise the law, and, let's all knock that out at once.
All right, all right. Motion?
We need a motion, or do we need?
Need a motion to approve the dust control plan.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Aaron, any further discussion, all those in favor? All right, both abstained, motion carries, all right. There we go.
Yep.
Moving right along.
Ah, in your packet, there is a draft letter to Mr. Dacey, town council had drafted, but it's gonna be on behalf of the board, so if you're okay with the letter, I will go ahead and send that.
Do I have to sign it, I noticed this is a face.
I think there's one in there for you to sign, Ernie.
This is, is the signed file?
It should be.
Just for me, right, it's not for anybody?
Yeah, for you.
By the way, don't anybody leave right away, cause we do rest and stuff, so. All right, uh, Maple Heights, we have a letter from, that's not.
That's that letter, that's the one now. Accessory apartment.
All right. Accessory apartment special permit renewal.
It must be a renewal, yeah. I mean, we don't have any.
For North Street.
Seems like he was just in.
I know.
Everything's the same, so, right?
Yep.
Yeah, just a renewal. So we'll sign that, that's in the bylaw?
Yeah, can you make a motion and vote that?
Yep. Make a motion, that's to accept, right?
To approve.
To approve, accessory apartment application.
Renewal.
Renewal for, for Richard Larue.
Lamro.
Lamro, is it?
Yep.
At one forty-four, was it North Street?
Yep.
Yep.
Motion made by Mike.
Second.
Seconded by Aaron, any further discussion, all of you favor?
Aye.
All of you abstained, motion carries.
You wanna do minutes again, or what do you wanna do first?
What's that?
There's minutes here.
Well, what's the Form A?
Form A, what's?
Yeah, why is that in there?
That's in there because at the last meeting, some of you may recall, we had a comment that we need to go through our forms, so I'm gonna put one form per meeting, and we'll.
Nice.
Peg away at these.
Okay.
Boy, you're a good one.
All right, which one is it?
This is an A and R application form.
All the contact, that's why it was in here, aside.
That is why it's in here.
Very bad, yeah.
So I do have some comments on this, um, I would like to add on this that the application form should be prepared by the land surveyor.
Uh-huh.
Primarily because there's sections in here that usually get incorrectly completed, specifically when it talks about the site, or the title to the property, or the frontage requirements, they don't know what, what they wanna fill out in those sections, and.
When would this go in force, if we vote on, well, support your.
Whenever, whenever you want.
Whenever we decide. So what's your recommendation of what we see here?
That we add a note at the top that says, "Application form must be completed by the professional land surveyor."
By who?
The professional land surveyor.
Is another cost, but it'll be done right.
They gotta do the plan anyway.
Yeah, they're gonna do the plan, that's fine. Yep, anybody having a problem with that?
No, that's fine, I get that.
Three, two.
Okay. You wanna, we need a vote on that, Bill, or?
No, I think the whole board should be here when we finalize.
Okay, we'll wait for the whole board.
Okay, let's put it aside.
All right, but everybody seems to be good with that? Okay. We got vouchers to sign, all right, we got meeting minutes in here?
I just see what else is on here that we might need to change or anything.
Okay, well, we can still bring it up when the, when the whole board's here, if you got something like.
I should also add a note on here, because this always happens, um, all owners must sign the application.
Yeah, that makes sense.
You're talking about the Form A?
All property owners. Because sometimes we get them in and one person signs, and then you don't know the situation.
All, all owners sign and addresses, you, you know what I mean? That way they, they can be, say, one, something happens, you have another address to go to as an owner.
Yep.
For, for communication back and forth.
Okay, she's got multiple owners, multiple addresses.
That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, if there's multiple owners, you have to hand their address.
And phone numbers, I think we should have phone numbers, their cell phones or whatever. Fee's still two hundred bucks, right?
Okay, anything else, Mike?
This is not a fee schedule. Bill, this doesn't have a fee schedule on it, right, this is not part of.
We can, we can add a section for fee calculations?
I think it should just.
Oh, we have fee calculations. Bottom of page two.
It has a total.
Yeah, but it doesn't tell you what.
We, we have a separate document, um, that goes over all our application fees.
Yep.
And I can refer to that.
And this here. And this is for A and R?
A and R, yeah. A lot frontage exception, how about that? You know, we should have on here whether or not it's a lot frontage exception.
And we don't have on here taxes that paid up.
We have a separate form, but, yeah, we should uppend that to here.
It should be, so that when we see this, we, we have it all, now, I don't think we can stop it, can we?
Yes, we can.
We can on, on A and R?
We can stop anything.
By voting no.
Permits.
There was one thing, there was one thing, though, that came up that we couldn't stop, even if that tax, even if taxes weren't paid, we couldn't stop that.
I'll check with Jerry.
Site plan reviews, you can't really stop them, right, you can.
You can.
It's in J.
You can put a requirement that it be filed, whereas this, this, you can't put conditions in.
Yeah.
So, so for example, on site plan, it was condition one, pay your taxes.
Something was brought up, though, and.
Yeah, we, we were not going to entertain an, an application if the taxes weren't paid, and we were doing that for a little while, but we were told.
We were told by, yeah, we couldn't.
Might be an A and R.
I'm not sure, could we look, could we look at that?
If the taxes weren't paid, we didn't have to entertain a.
And we were told we can't do that.
We were told we can't do that.
Well, well, I'm, I'm wondering if it was a procedural thing, because the way the bylaw reads is you have to hold a hearing on the tax issue in order to withhold the permit issuance, so. So, so it, I think with the A and R, it might be A and R because it became a timing issue. You have to advertise and notify the hearing. And then, you know, you got the twenty-one day times.
That would expire in the meantime, so it would be a constructive approval.
Might be that.
That's why I was bringing it up. I don't know if it would be tax.
But still, we can ask, our taxes current.
Yeah, if, I, I think it should be on here.
Can the town file a lien on the approved A and R with the registry so that when it gets filed? So, say they're owed money and sometimes people are selling this, you know, because they. It wouldn't get approved.
Yeah, the, the A and R process is purely procedural.
Right, it's, it's. We just, we just looking at boundaries and, and what's allowed and. So, not the tax thing?
Well, we can look at taxes, we can ask questions about it, whether or not we can deny it.
Right.
The question.
Well, that's the question, but if you can deny it, then in some cases, people might be selling the property in A and R to help. But then, but they couldn't sell it unless the taxes were cleaned up before the sale. We can still create that A and R. We can create it, but then. But after that, it's, it's our hands, but if they wanna sell it, then it's up to the next person to say, no, you can't sell it because you, the taxes aren't paid. It could be paid at closing or, you know, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's, that's done all the time.
Right, right.
It's done all the time. Well, we're looking for is the information on here.
Right.
And maybe some clarification.
Give it to us, do you have the information? Yeah, I mean, paid or unpaid. Right, that's a good point.
I mean, it's a form for that and that's all that we're checking on.
You can ask Jay that question, I guess.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a five-page document.
I'm sorry. Hey, it's right there. Didn't catch it.
Yeah.
It is already on it. Oh, our taxes currently on it.
Yeah, but, but still, whether or not we can.
Yeah, but, you know, it's a difference also between the application form and the form signed by the tax collector.
Well, yeah.
Which, we have a separate form for that, so we, we do, it needs to be appended to this thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we, can we change that, "Our taxes current on the property"? You could say, yeah, there's always taxes on the property. Can we say, "Our taxes currently paid on the property"? Paid to date or something, just add. Yeah, you could add that. I'm taking the words literally, you know? Yeah, sure, there's taxes current. There's a lot of taxes. All right. Where did you find that on this?
Beat this to death. Yeah, there is, we're clearing it up, something that's always brought up, you know?
Right.
I'm doing one meeting, there's no way to do it. No, no sidebar, that's uncommitted.
Okay, this is good. I'll, I'll take a stab at including some of these things for the next meeting.
Good.
Excellent, good job. Thank you. I'm bringing in the next one.